Haven't seen any issues, but there are concerns regarding the safety of that platform. When the water comes up over it.
The new platform, the new one that's arcing? Okay.
So that I think it's been used quite a bit. I'm happy about that. It seems to be on it too quite well. When I'm there, there are young people out there assisting with boats coming in and out. So that's all great.
Good.
But I've had to quite honestly, when I've had to gas up my boat people, but they are right away. So comfortable. I don't see anything terrible going on at all, but continued safety regarding. Is there kids, children running around there? I don't know whether or not it needs to be monitored more, but I'd be interested in conversation around that.
Good, good to know. Good to know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment as well on your resume. Very impressive. All your years in education and city school district. And so I'm really happy that you stepped forward for this project and um I didn't see the records of the boat in here, but it didn't really matter. And I think if there's anything, I think you may have already answered it, but if there's anything that you, you know, see that really should be changed. I mean, I think we're all fortunate in everything that we have going on and and the work that we've done, we've come so far. And you were very fortunate with our harbor master, but you know, if there's anything that you see like, oh, I really want to work on a particular project about that, or if it's more or less like making sure the safety, making sure this stuff takes place that we have moving on.
Yeah, I don't have a project in mind, but I guess if I thought about it long enough, I want to see that the young people in our community access the water in a safe manner and have appreciation for it. I really am not sure what happens in the public schools here, but with Iris being right here in our town and the availability to learn more about boating through that and tarot stock and other industries. I do expect the school system is attentive regarding that, but maybe more attentive in relation to the new luminous of our harbor. So maybe I'd find it interesting to do some more of the right. The volunteering would possibly empower them for the school, for the school kids.
Even through the after school programs or something like that as well. Yeah, that would be good. I mean, I know there's some outreach to young people, but I'm not sure if it's just through like some of the organizations like, you know, like I think Harry Jeff has classes in the summer, stuff like that. But I don't know about through the schools. I know that they do do some monitoring. I think Steve actually had worked with them doing monitoring of the of the water. And I think they have students involved with that end of it. But you're right. I mean, I've lived within a couple of blocks of the water my whole life and I don't have a boat, you know.
Good for you, Mary.
I don't have a boat, you know, like I feel bad. I feel like I'm so like not, I love the water. I love to sit by, like to see it, like be near it, but I just don't have, like, I'm not really a boater. You know, it's kind of a weird thing to be in Bristol and not really be a boater.
Mary, you have to have, you got to find friends with boats. Then that's the, that's the best world because you get to go off.
More cost effective that way.
Boats and pools are better when somebody else is on.
That sounds good.
Pamela, thank you for being here with us today. And certainly it's great to hear somebody with an education background talking about opportunities in the marine trades and and in that sector. Those are really good paying jobs, really good paying, blue collar jobs. And I'm sure Wayne will have something to say about the opportunities with electric, being an electrician and everything. What can you tell me as a boater? What are some of the key challenges that you see us facing in the next 10 years or so? Or what do you think should be on our radar in terms of under whatever is under the harbor commission's jurisdiction?
Yeah, I would think as we increase the use of those smaller boats that are in the harbor, young kids learning how to sail, as well as those windsurfing type of boats that are there when the winds are high. There's a lot of activity coming into that in the harbor during those times. So in some way, I don't know what, but something in order that there be safety regarding that. I'm coming in from the harbor island or out of the bay and the winds are high. There's this incredible amount of activity back and forth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pamela, any questions for us?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne. Guess what we're gonna ask you?
That's a benefit of going second.
Yes, it is. So why do you think you'd be a good fit for this position?
I like him, not retired, semi-retired. I guess we're since sort of stepping up. On read. Watch our jam. I am a boat. Stay on. First story, I've seen certain sending real stiff old Tom that's moving like my dad. Eyes on our harbor.
You come with a perspective of, and it was just brought up about electrical. I know we've had some challenges with electrical there. I think actually you would bring that wonderful perspective as a voice that is, comes from knowledge in regards to that. Was that a nice way of saying all of that?
So it's a touchy situation. It probably really doesn't want to be discussed at this point.
Fair enough.
I've had my, my hands in it a little bit and I'd be more than, more happy to share it with everybody.
Perfect. So colleagues, questions?
Jump, jump in, Mr. Chairman. Wayne, again, thanks for stepping up. I, we appreciate it. And I guess my question for you is since you're a business owner, I think you bring a lot of value to the team there because you can think about on the business perspective of how we could increase revenues down there, boater experience, you know, with the fuel and everything down there. So I guess my question is from a business perspective, because I know you have a lot of electrical background as well. That's also very helpful. What if maybe, what do you think you think we could take to the next level there as far as business wise?
More docks.
More docks.
It's a money maker.
Yeah.
I think we're in the right direction.
Okay.
I think if we, we have to face that challenge and then bring in more bigger boats, the town of Bristol will do better. And I think it's a, it's a real good challenge for us to really look at.
Definitely, definitely. And I know, I think with that Robin Rogue development, we'll see what happens there. So it'll be an interesting perspective. Thank you.
Wayne, Tony, when, when you're talking about more docks, are we talking about transient docks or are you talking about more local docks?
It's a two full problem. We need more docks for our Bristolians, you know, and not everybody, you've seen the list. It's, it's long. And everybody would like to, you know, be able to use their boat on, on the town dock. It's, it's a nice fun thing to do. But from a revenue standpoint, I think transit is, is the money maker. They're gonna buy food, fuel, they're gonna spend money in town, they're gonna go to our restaurants, our cabins, and, and they're gonna, they're gonna talk about Bristol when they leave here. And then you're gonna have that dock where situation picking up more and more. It's gonna, we don't want it too busy, but we want it busy enough that we can handle. The police department can oversee and Greg is not, you know, not taxi with too many people or too much watching the harbor. But I think it's a real good revenue source for, for the town.
Thank you, and thank you for stepping up.
Just have like a quick question on that. So on the downtown, I mean, everything's obviously pretty much within walking distance, but not everybody can walk long distances. I mean, you know, as we get more transient, you know, visitors coming in and out, day trips, what have you. Do you think that we need to have like shuttle service or something else that takes people around during the summer, for example?
You know what? Your legs are made for walking and enjoy the town with, with your legs. And I mean, I, I, I think you'll miss the beauty of the town by which are driving by our beautiful homes and our historic values. I, I think, I think, you know, it's, it's best that you enjoy it by a scenic view by walking to this town. I don't think you want to get too commercialized with your bus anymore. That's my opinion.
Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions to the council?
Hi Wayne, thanks again for stepping up and everything. Challenges, what should be on our radar over the next 10 years?
Safety is a good issue, you know, Greg's, Greg's doing a real good job. I mean, the more boated you bring in, the more alcohol gets distributed and the more it gets safe or less it gets served. So, you know, we should, we should pay attention to that.
Anything else? Wayne, any questions for us?
No.
Thank you.
Bring a good construction knowledge and I hope I fit well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is part of our regular council meeting. We're gonna quote, quote, start again at seven, but if this council wants to take the next step on appointments, we can.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to appoint Pam and Wayne to the advisory committee set to expire in August 2025.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to both of you. Thank you. So we are going to take a 10 minutes. Did I skip something?
Both can.
Yes. So we're gonna take 10 minutes and we will start again at seven o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of September 21st. This evening's pledge of allegiance will be led by the East Bay Softball Recreation League. Girls, girls, could you come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance? You can come right up here, right in the middle. If you'd all please stand.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, you turn around and we'll pledge. You ready? Yep, flags all over the place. You ready? All right. Who wants to start? I'll start. Ready?
I. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. So the girls didn't know that they were gonna do that tonight. So nice job. That's right. And since they put such hard effort and energy in, could I get a motion from the council to move F4 forward? Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to move F4 forward. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You'll know why in a moment.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the item on the agenda is Charlene Ferrera. She's the vice president of the East Bay Softball. This is in consideration for council support for the East Bay Softball Recreational League.
Charlene, can you come up? You can go right to the podium if you would.
Brielle, you're first.
All right, go ahead Brielle. We have Brielle first.
It is with great excitement to announce our newly established Girls' Rec Softball League. Here in Bristol at Cole State Park, we are a now profit organization. Our league is open to girls ages four to 12. After our first registration, we had 50 girls register to play. Due to its popularity, we expect these numbers to increase with each new season. To make this rewarding experience a reality for us players, we are asking for consideration from the town council to help our East Bay softball. With the council's support for East Bay softball, you will help strengthen our community bond as well as provide us players for the opportunity to play a sport, learn how to work as a team, gain confidence in ourselves while building a physical fitness, which all leads to making healthier life choices. All contributions will go directly to improving our fields, purchasing equipment and will offset program costs for parents. We appreciate your time and generosity in advance. Any contributions are sincerely appreciated by our entire East Bay softball league. Thank you. East Bay on three.
One, two, three, East Bay.
Outstanding job, girls. It's, it is not easy to speak in public.
I know, they did good.
So they did an outstanding job. So what's in front of us is a request. We have sponsorship levels of silver, gold, and platinum. What's this council's pledge?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that we become a gold sponsor for 500.
I'll second the motion. Yeah, okay.
So we have a motion from Tony, seconded by Mary? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Second discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say I wanted some of this on the record. I, I got to know Charlene a little bit when I was a little league manager for a King Philip Little League. There wasn't a softball team during that time. And so her daughters were on the King Philip Little League baseball teams. And Charlene was responsible for herding cats, right? You were out there making sure that all of us managers had our equipment, that all of us knew where we had to be. You were there to answer all the questions that we had. And I'm so incredibly impressed that you were able to step up because I had heard people saying that, why isn't there a softball team in Bristol? And you stepped up and you did it. And I guess there's a old saying that, you know, if you want to get something done, you give it to a busy person. And or a busy. So Charlene, yeah, I just wanted to say, I wanted to recognize that and I wanted to thank you for stepping up and making sure that all of these young women have an experience to playing competitive sports and to build character while they're doing it. So thank you.
Charlene, I just, I just wanted to say that teamwork makes the dream work and you have an all-star team right there. I mean, they're pretty impressive. I mean, yeah, they're awesome. They look great.
Great.
Any other discussions?
Just very quickly, just be careful because the commitment is a commitment. I know what it feels like when I did Bristol Youth. You know, once you come around, you have to hang around for 30 years.
He's signing you up for a long time. I just say, congratulations on getting it started. It's always a need and girls did a great job tonight.
Yes.
Girls did a great job. Not only the pledge of allegiance, but all your little presentation. Awesome.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
So we had a motion from Tony to, and then seconded by Mary for gold sponsorship of $500. Tony, I'm assuming that was from council contingency?
Yes, correct.
Excellent. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is why local governments fund.
Thank you.
True.
Madam clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the motion for, is the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. And we have the town council meeting of August 24th and the executive session minutes from August 24th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearings. We have Catherine Howarth of Ricotti Sandwich Shop, 11 Gooding Avenue. This is a request for transfer of the Class BB Limited Intoxicating Beverage License to Benjamin Howarth for Ricotti's of Bristol LLC doing business as Ricotti Sandwich Shop and ownership.
So this is, as the clerk pointed out, public hearing is going to ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Would you happen to be Benjamin? Could you please state your full name and address for the record?
My name is Benjamin Howarth. I live at 20 State Street, Bristol, Rhode Island.
So this is.
Yeah.
Administrator is gonna say. Could you tell us a bit why you're in favor? What's happening here? Obviously, you're the applicant.
Sure. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Benjamin Howarth. I am the new owner of Ricotti Sandwich Shop. I recently bought it from my mother, Catherine Howarth, who's been running it for the last 20 years or so. I'm here today to request the transfer of ownership from the liquor license from her to myself. This is not a place where people are coming to drink a lot of beer or to get drunk in the middle of the day. We're mostly just a sandwich shop. We also mostly just sell local beers made in Bristol, which I think is important for this town, for small businesses to support each other. And I hope it's something that we have the opportunity to continue to do so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any, any spinach pies?
I'm sure we can work something out.
That's on the record. Thank you. Thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next public hearing is Jordan Sawyer, doing business as Brick Pizza Co., 500 Wood Street, Unit 211. This is a request modification, modification of the license to extend the hours of liquor license sales.
Thank you. So again, this is a public hearing. I want to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Hello.
Again, not surprised, please. So if you could state your name and address for the record.
Jordan Sawyer, 45 Kikemun Avenue, Bristol, Rhode Island.
And if you could just expand upon why you're in front of us.
I am here on behalf of Brick Pizza Company, looking to extend our hours, even though the original application was to one o'clock as per the previous town council meeting I was before you. We seem to come to meet in the middle at midnight, which I'm very happy with. And I'm here to answer any questions or speak on behalf.
Is there any questions for Jordan? Well, that was easy, Jordan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Bridgety, I am in favor of it.
Could you state your, you state your name and your address for the record?
93 Highland Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Sawyer runs first class operations. It's a win-win for us. He should be allowed just to extend the hours a little bit. Little, little past my bedtime, but many others will certainly take advantage of that. So I would strongly urge you to grant his request.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2022-8, Chapter 17, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 5. And this is for the prohibition against cannabis smoking, vaporizing in public spaces. Second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is ordinance 2022-10, Chapter 17, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions to Article 2. And this is to extend the alcohol beverage license establishment's closing time to midnight after a six-month review period. This is also second reading.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C3. This is ordinance 2022-11, Chapter 16, to motor vehicles and traffic, Article 5, stopping, standing, and parking. And this is to add a no parking in the vicinity of 300 High Street. Also second reading.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Yes, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is Benjamin Howarth of Ricotti's of Bristol LLC doing business as Ricotti Sandwich Shop, 11 Gooding Avenue. Request of transfer of the Class BB Limited Intoxicating Beverage License.
And move that we transferred the license.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve the transfer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D2. This is Benjamin Howarth of Ricotti's of Bristol LLC doing business as Ricotti Sandwich Shop. And this is a request for a vitinoline license.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? I will take a moment and say, I used to work at Ricotti's when, a long time ago. And it's as good then as it is now. So you guys do a great job. So it's, it's great to have you there. So any other discussion?
And they cannot change the menu.
And not even a little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D3. This is Jordan Sawyer, doing business as Brick Pizza Company, 500 Wood Street, Unit 211. This is a request for modification of the license to extend the hours of the liquor sale from 11:00 PM to now 12:00 AM.
Based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve with a six-month review.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve with a six-month review. Any discussion? Actually, I will say that you were a perfect example of someone to come in front of us to ask to do this. Your reputation, your lack of issues at both of your establishments was, you were the perfect person to come in front of us. You've opened the door for other businesses that may want to consider this. And you're honestly the, the gold standard in this, in the sense of how you handle yourself. We're not, you're not alone. There are other gold standards, but you do a great job and it is a great establishment. So nice job. Any other discussions?
All in favor? Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Keep up, keep up the good work, Jordan.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D4. And this is Mario J. Als for Bristol Liquors, Inc., doing business as Bristol Liquors at 390 Medicum Avenue, Unit 6. This is a request for a transfer of a Class A intoxicating beverage license to Deval Patel for Shebae, Bristol LLC, doing business as Bristol Liquors. This is under, for new ownership. This is called for public hearing on October 12th. Just wanted to let you know that we did receive an item today for objection, but that will go at the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to call for public hearing on October 12th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D5. This is Stephen Cavalieri for Cup Defenders, 230 Wood Street. This is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for the children's Christmas party fundraiser on Saturday, November 26th, from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
Is Steve here? If you could state your full name and address for the record.
Steve Cavalieri, 45 Congressional Street.
Thank you. So tell us what's in front of us and what you're requesting.
Requesting a one-day entertainment for children's fundraiser for the party, be it for the kids in December to help raise money to buy the toys that we need to purchase.
I make a motion and we approve that.
I just had a quick question.
Could we get a second?
So motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve discussion.
The, you have it till one o'clock in the, in the morning?
Yeah, that was just, I'm willing to close it up a little bit earlier. We don't have to. Yeah, that was just, I'm willing to close it up a little bit earlier. We don't have to go that late.
Yeah, the police request like that not having live band past eleven.
Right.
And because in prior years, they had a call at like quarter of one. So I mean, how late are you proposing to go then?
We can go to eleven o'clock. We just know whether to start a little earlier. Maybe from like seven to eleven. Have them wrap it up by eleven o'clock. That's, that's no problem.
So eleven works for you.
Eleven is fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we make that part of the motion?
Certainly. They'll be included.
Okay. Mary, in a second on that.
Yes, from seven to eleven, not nine to eleven.
So it's nine to eleven PM? Yeah.
Thank you for the request for clarity.
Yeah, we'll be starting a little bit earlier. You know, seven to eleven will be okay. That's all right.
I think he's asking if seven.
To modify, go on seven to eleven.
Anyone have objection to that? No. So Tony, your motion?
Yes, I'm good with that, seven to eleven, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, be good for the kids.
Oh, we, we are, we're good.
A little earlier.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Alan Bernstein, the Executive Director of the Community Strings Project, two forty High Street. This is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for the Community String Project at the Bristol State House for the string quartet on Saturday, October first, twenty twenty-two, from seven thirty PM to ten PM.
Based on the positive recommendations, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F one. This is Susan Rancourt, Uproad Races and Events, Inc. In partnership with the Bristol Fourth of July Committee, this is in regards to a half marathon ending at Independence Park on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six thirty AM.
Do you state your full name and address for the record?
Susan Rancourt, three Mayo Drive, Warren, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you give us, you do it every year, give us the rundown of what's in front of us.
Sure. So we do a half marathon in partnership with the Fourth of July celebration. We are actually sneaking it up a little bit further from the Fourth of July actual weekend because it is a little busy in town. And we do a half marathon starting at Independence Park. We've changed the course now since the pandemic because now we showcase more of Bristol rather than Cold State Park. So we actually run a lot through the parade route. We work with Roger Williams University. We run through part of their property. And this year, we're going to be using Columbus Fathers, which they've been just great. They have great property there, too. So we run downtown. We run through Roger Williams. We run this incredible view right underneath the bridge. We'll come back around through Columbus, Columbus Fathers, and we'll finish it, Thames Park, at Independence Park on Thames Street.
Ooh, plenty of hills in that. Challenging for everybody.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we've gotten a lot of curse words since we've removed the Cold State Park. But I joke because like I, I coached the cross country team at the high school and that is our running route every single day. So, you know, it is what it is.
What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion, do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any other discussion?
So rain date or no? It's a rain or shine. Okay.
We will only stop if it's lightning.
So uphill and rainy.
Yeah.
We had one year where we had Fred Campania, who was the meteorologist at the time, and Mark Surles, who was also meteorologist at the time, at the start line telling us when we could go because it was that in between thunderstorms. It was crazy.
Yeah. Challenges, we like them. Yeah, all right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F two. This is Leslie Maderos for Basil and Bunny, five hundred Wood Street, Unit two fourteen. This is a request for one additional Class BB Limited Liquor License.
Is Leslie here?
Aye.
Welcome. If you could state your name and, right up, thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record and tell us why you're requesting.
Yeah, my name is Leslie Maderos. I live at thirty-one Bowen Street in Rumford, Rhode Island. And we are requesting a beer and wine license to help for any, with some lost revenue from our business. We just opened up last month at the new Unity Park. We were originally a food truck for the last few years and we just made our home here in Bristol. We love it very much. And we're hoping to get people to stay in the restaurant a little bit longer. We've been dealing with a lot of takeout, with people going to the breweries. So we're hoping to, to gain some more extra business and revenue. And we plan to supply a lot of local beers as well and local wine, so everyone can enjoy.
Okay, so the positive recommendations, motion to refer to the solicitor to create a license, one additional Class BB Liquor License.
Right. Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say that I mean, I'm so happy to see graduates of Hope and Me.
Yeah.
Unity Park, number one. Number two, your place is adorable inside. It's really.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm so happy to see the article about you in the local paper. And
Yeah.
When I was in there, I, I ran into a friend of mine and like, okay, I think this is sort of like a Hawaiian Polynesian vibe. It's like, and that's what it is. It's really, really nice and great investment that you've done.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck to all.
Thank you. Yeah, we really wanted to be just like a really nice, warm, inviting place where people would want to just stay and enjoy a meal and feel, feel happy.
It's a good experience. We like that. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F three. This is Paula Flair for the Bristol Athletic Hall of Fame. This is a request for permission to use and sell alcoholic beverages at the Maritime Center for their induction ceremony to be held on Saturday, October eighth, twenty twenty-two, from four to seven.
Paul is here. There's Paul. Paul, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Paula Flora, one forty-nine Fata Madrye, Bristol.
Welcome. So in front of us is a request to, it's your induction ceremony. Could you just share real quick what it's about? And it's a thirty-second advertisement.
Okay. Well, I'm the chairman of the Bristol Athletic Hall of Fame. It's been around for at least thirty years. Each year, we induct a new class of Hall of Famers. This year, we're scheduled to do the class of ninety-eight from Montauk High School, along with some special recognition. We've been on the sidelines for two years due to COVID. We used to, the, the organization always had the event at Venus de Milo, which is no longer an option. We thought it'd be nice to have it right in town. And we're applying for a liquor license. We have two gals who will be serving just beer and wine. I know they have liquor liability. We have general liability coverage. And so we're just hoping we can have the approval to get back in business.
Paul, you sound like you're in the insurance business.
That's my twin cousin.
What's this council's pleasure?
I move that, I'm sorry. I just move that we approve the request to use building and sell alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck. Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
I do want to just say, Major, I love these, this form.
I was going to say that, too.
It's really good.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. And members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one. This is the Bristol Planning Board. This is one term set to expire on April twenty twenty-four. We have five members with interest. We have Brian Clark, thirty-one Evelyn Drive, with interest in a full term. Myra Page with interest in appointment. Jesslyn Duress with interest in appointment. George Dewatt, Jr., with interest in appointment. And Michael Paul Souza, also with interest in appointment.
Motion to refer, refer this to Madam Clerk to set up interviews for October twelfth at six o'clock. So for all candidates. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to set up interviews at our next meeting at six PM. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H one. This is David Scarpino, the chairman from the Bristol Christmas Festival. This is the review and approval of the proposed revisions to, of the Bristol Christmas Festival bylaws.
Mr. Solicitor, we referred this to you to kind of review. Could you share?
Sure. I, I did review the proposal. And basically, what they're asking is to allow certain individuals to be recognized as lifelong members. Since the council has the authority to appoint members, it would be up to the council as to whether or not you would allow this process to go forward. So in other words, if in fact someone was proposed for a lifelong member and you deem that that would be appropriate, you would vote on that individual in the same manner as you vote on the appointments that happen on, on the annual basis.
Counsel?
We accept this, these by, these bylaws, I guess, and with the change that the solicitor refers to for section ten.
Second.
Discussion?
Just had a question for the solicitor. So we, we recognize somebody as a lifelong member on the Christmas festival. Could we also do a, some sort of other recognition as well? Or, I mean, what? I guess I'm trying to understand what the, what the significance would be if we went in another way for recognition, I guess.
I think part of this is, I think, I'm not sure. My guess is that this is a takeoff on the Fourth of July Committee. Because when people have been on for X number of years or they've contributed a great deal of their time and they maybe get a certain age and no longer able to be, go to the meetings on a regular basis, they're considered life members. But I, we don't appoint, we don't appoint them in the Fourth of July Committee in that way. I mean, I'm guessing that's what that.
No, I appreciate you shedding some light.
I, I actually, just, if we're appointing, I think it's important that we're appointing, so.
Correct. So, so to Tim's question, I, I would imagine and assume that the committee could recognize individuals for their service in, in any way they desire. It could be a plaque or some other type of recognition.
Sure.
As, as opposed to making them a lifelong member. But I, I honestly don't know what's behind it. But my recommendation would be if you're going to go this route, that it'd be by council approval.
No, just wanted to get some clarity, that's all. I don't have a.
I was just going to say, the Fourth of July Committee, the life members are listed on the annual members.
Well, you already approved, right?
Right.
So it's already approved. Got it. Perfect.
Is everybody okay with those changes?
Yeah.
All right. So we had a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve with the suggested changes from the solicitor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H two. This is Stephen Bridgity of ninety-three Highlands Road. This is a request for approval of the proposed Saya Independence Park for the Bristol Middle Passage Port Markham Memorial. And I just wanted to bring to attention, we did receive two additional letters to support that are on the counter.
You already stated your name and address for the records. You don't have to do that again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable members of the town council, thank you for having us back, for inviting us to come back. We were here just six months ago. I want to say also greetings to our other members of the community. Steve, our town administrator, Melissa, our town clerk. Mike, it's always good to see you. Diane, Major Burke, the new Julie, because I don't know your name. I'm sorry.
Sarah.
Sarah, how do you do?
Steve, there's a whole bunch of people in the audience.
Is, is five minutes up yet?
Go ahead.
Warren as well. And I'll be referring to some folks like, like Warren in my brief talk this, this, this evening. But I do, I do want to reach out to everyone because we, we're regarding, we, the Middle Passage Port Marcus Committee of Bristol. We regard this as a, an inclusive community project that involves a whole town, for that matter. And it was just six months ago that we were here, as you remember probably. We did do our due diligence and looking at various sites along the waterfront, mostly, from Papa's Coast Road down toward Wally Beach. And we did come to a consensus with public input. We did hold a public meeting in June of this year. I did meet with our town planner, Ed Tanner, to see if there are any issues with any of the sites. And there was nothing that came up, except, well, as state ownership and the case of what we'll discuss with you tonight. But we were very cognizant of any possibilities and looking at all the various possibilities involving the site that I want to discuss with you tonight. I want to take a moment, though, to talk about what this memorial is about. And I'm going to call it a memorial. It has several other descriptions, a marker, some kind of signage. But we're looking to do something that is in the spirit of remembrance and reconciliation. And we propose to place a memorial that would be in honor of the people who endured the transatlantic slave trade, also known as the Middle Passage. Memorial is intended to be what, what we would call a touchstone, a symbol of peace. And it is going to be about healing. It will acknowledge Bristol's role in this part of our town's history as well. But I want to say also from the outset that what we propose is going to be something purely positive in honoring the people who were involved, our ancestors, we could call them at this point. And I want to say emphatically that nothing about this memorial will be about blame or culpability, nothing like that, nothing negative. We propose to install a memorial at Independence Park by consensus of our group, but also with public input. That is a favorite site. There at the park, we want to do something in the northwest corner, which now is basically foliage. And we will be proposing specific artwork, and that would be another occasion that we'd like to come back to you. We're only going to ask you tonight for one decision, looking to you for approval to go ahead at this, at this particular site. The site would involve roughly about twelve by twelve feet square. And it's going to be something that is in keeping with the other existing memorials in terms of proportion, massing, any, any use of materials as well, which would be stone, metal. We haven't come up with that yet. We need your approval first and foremost for the location. And then we can begin to design and come back to you for approval with the design, for the wording, the language that would be associated with this memorial as well. We're very mindful of the other memorials that are there, the Columbus one and the one of Independence, excuse me, the Revolutionary War veterans. We want something that would work harmoniously with them and its position would create essentially a triangle and be offset in that corner. We plan for the intended work to meet the standard, the interior department's standards, number nine and ten, that the Historic District Commission here is guided by. We're also going to be talking with other agencies that are necessary for approval. The CRM C Coastal Resource Management, also the Historic, State Historic and Preservation Commission. I was fortunate to learn about all of this be, because I, I talked to Herbie Mattoiso. And he informed me about the process that he went through for the Revolutionary War. I also spoke with Warren because Warren's group, Parks and Recreation, as you know, take care of those grounds, among many other things in town. So Warren was aware of the site that we chose. He, he's also said he wants to see ultimately what we will propose. But for right now, we don't have that before you. We want it to be in proximity by the water because the water is very important. It would represent the voyages, the proximity, certainly in Narragansett Bay, the Atlantic Ocean. So it's very appropriate that it be placed there. We have a number of people here tonight, too. I wanted to recognize, I intend to do that from the outset, members of our group, Bernard Freeman, Sarah Weed, Maddie Kemp, Catherine Ziff is also here. I think Steve Oliver is here. I'm not sure if I see him. But Keith and Susan Maloney and many others have been working as Peg Canton. We're also honored that Mrs. Victoria Johnson is here tonight. It might be her first time at a Bristol Town Council meeting. She is the driving force and the spirit of Newport Middle Passage marker. And they have a site well on its way. Mrs. Jay is in the back, sitting next to Catherine. She's inspired us. We've consulted with her every step of the way. She puts in numerous hours with us. We're also consulting with Charles Roberts, who you might know, responsible for the slavery medallions project, which we have two in town. Our memorial is going to be different and it's going to be more in association with the wholeness, the legend, the story of the Middle Passage, as opposed to. as opposed to what the medallions do, which refer to specific sites. We want to be closer to home in a sense, like our sister town of Warren has had a marker for several years. And as I've already said, Newport is well on its way. Bristol's memorial will also be recognized as UNESCO site. This is an international organization, I'm sure you're familiar with it. So we would have a real boost in tourism. There's a lot of people that come just to see these UNESCO sites throughout the country, if not the world. The Middle Passage extends, and I think you're familiar with that, from South America through the Caribbean, up the eastern seaboard, from the Gulf too, from Texas, all the way to New Hampshire. There are now roughly 26 sites that have been installed, and there are many more in planning. Our chosen site has also been approved by the National Middle Passage Port Marcus Group by Ms. Ms. Ann Cobb. She has given us approval and we've consulted and we've listened and learned from her every step of the way. One last footnote I want to make, we are talking about Independence Park, but we're very mindful of New Gori. New Gori was the neighborhood, the area of our town in Bristol, which starts roughly at State Street, the Town Common, and extends Northwood, past Bayview, even toward Perry. That whole community now, lovely homes, some businesses there as well. That was the area where our free people of color lived. And we want to remember them with another special memorial. It may be something far more modest than what we come to you regarding Independence Park. We haven't gotten there yet, but people have asked about it. They've remarked that New Gori should be acknowledged, and we are in total agreement with that. And we plan to do that at a later date. And it may involve private land, and in that sense, it it may not involve you directly in decision making, but we will certainly talk to you about that. Everything that we do, we will do in concert with with this esteemed body right here. So we will come back with that. There are individuals, we will, that particular monument or memorial again, we'll we'll talk about. Daniel Tanner, who was a a well-known, popular barber in the 19th century. William Snively was a blacksmith. He worked at the depot on Thame Street. And there's another individual we found out, it's really through Lynn's research, Lynn Smith from Linden Place. She was so good to help us at the June meeting as well. And there's a man, as I started to say, Walter Scotty Dixon, he was a machinist. And these were people that were part of our community. And we want to remember them and we'll do something a little bit later at New Gori.
Mr. Bridg, Mr. Bridgity, I I want to say that, you know, I think this is, we need to take the next steps on this. You know, I always remember a quote from Ernest Hemingway. He said, "The world breaks everyone, but afterwards many are stronger in the broken places." And I think Bristol will be a lot stronger with this request to approve the proposed site, the Middle Passage Port Marker. So I'm, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve this proposed site at Independence Park for the Bristol Middle Passage Port Marker Memorial. And once those that location.
Appreciate that, Tim.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, you've stated now two locations. You're talking about in the Bennett's Park and New Gori possibly on Wood Street to cover, you know, a range from State, possibly a little bit past Bayview onto Perry. So could that be combined rather than, you know, coming back and say, okay, let's come up with a different location and restart the process?
That will be your discretion, Tony, I believe. We're we're here tonight to ask your approval for us to secure the site at Independence Park. And as you indicate or even dictate for that matter, we would proceed a little bit later at the Wood Street area and something we would find appropriate there. But primarily, we're here for the one item of Independence Park. I appreciate, Tim, your motion. There are a few other people that can address this, but if you are interested in moving forward towards some action, I'm happy to answer any further further questions as well. We do have people that we're consulting with and a couple of them would like to speak if you would like.
Thank you. No, if I may, I I think you've made it very clear. Obviously, there are steps that need to be taken prior to the final step, you know, the the position of the of the flag or the whatever it is that it's going to be positioned there. So with all that being said, I mean, I, as I made a second still stance, obviously, and but with the contingency that we need to follow all the checkboxes, working with Diane and Ed and obviously going through the and the administrator, obviously, going through the different steps. And as you pointed out, the size and language was one of my questions, but you've addressed that already. That would be of concern and I would like to know, you know, what would entail.
Yes, we'll we'll be back at the appropriate time. With your approval, we'll get to work on the design work involving the language and all other considerations. I did speak with Mike DePont too about the physical feasibility there. And he said, I mean, he's a pro, as you well know. And he said, there's not going to be any problems that he can see. We would do something again that would be in harmony with the other monuments, the memorials that are there.
I I just want to comment that I think the New Gori project is like the critical project myself. I think it's a lot of interest by a lot of people, but I do think they should be handled separately than to be rolled in right at this point. So I think, you know, it was a long road for you all to get to this point and answer some of the council's questions. So I would, I would, you know, take this project first.
Yes.
That role, you know, get that approved and and figure out like what the design is going to look like and, you know, and fundraising plan, construction plan, whatever else you need to do to come back to us.
Want to have some bake sales, whatever it takes to raise the funds.
Got to think bigger than that.
Well, Mr. Bridgity and the group that was helping him out, I got to say that a lot of progress has been made since you guys were here last. And I can tell that there's a lot more research that's gone into this, a lot more thought that's been put into this and a lot more public input. And I I don't know if I speak for everybody here, but we appreciate that. So I'm happy to support this. I also think at the end of the day, really, the council should have the overall say in the final project. So it sounds like you have a really long road ahead of you in terms of getting your approvals through CRMC Historic District Commissions and and everything like that. But I think ultimately, when the final design and everything like that, when you've decided on that, everything, it'd be nice to see something like that so that we would have that final approval on it.
Yes, we'll we'll keep you posted every step of the way, even by emails if necessary. But when we have the full package together, we'll address you again and present to you the design.
So I had a couple of questions. I first, let me just tell you that I support what is being proposed. No objections to it.
Thank you.
Except the location, and here's why. I think that it sounds like this, and I said this at the last meeting, so I'm very consistent with it, is we're not in control of Linden Place, it's a nonprofit, it's not the town, so it is is its own entity. But when I think of this, I think of it being close proximity to a Linden Place or something like that. And it feels disassociated to me. So if we take the next step, I have, let me say it one more time. I don't have any objection, I support what's being proposed. I just don't, I find the the location to be kind of disconnected. I don't know how to say it other than that. So I I don't, I don't support the location, but I'm not going to vote against. I'm going to abstain because I don't want to give you the impression that I don't want you to take the next step. I would love this to be in a place that is, I don't want to say more appropriate, but I want to say that it would be closer to Linden Places. It comes back in my head all the time of it benefited from that horror. And I think it's a wonderful place for education, which of course this is, right? Is, you called it a touchstone, I think that's perfect. So I I wanted to put that on the record because I don't want you to take what I'm saying the wrong way. And you've obviously, when you came in front of us last time, this was not, this is clear when it was last time, it is not. As my colleagues have pointed out, there's CMRC, as you did too, state historic, local historic. These are not reasons not to do it. Well, Tim quoted somebody, so will I. Kennedy said, "We go to the moon not because it's easy, because it's hard." So that's great. I think it's wonderful, it's not a reason not to. But no, there's a lot in front, and I think there is other opportunities that could raise the awareness. So is there any other discussion? No, okay. So we had a motion from Mary seconded, I'm sorry, we had a motion from Tim seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all, members of the council. We're thrilled. We appreciate it. We'll start planning at that location.
We look forward to seeing you.
Nathan, I appreciate your thoughts, I do. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H3. This is Director Williamson in regard to the proposal for the outdoors, for the seasonal outdoor dining regulations is continued from August 24.
Diane, this is on our agenda back because we needed to decide where we want to take the funding from. And it seems like a wonderful opportunity for Sarah to to. Hi, Sarah.
Hello. I'd suggested that they be taken out of the general fund since we have revenue coming in for meals and beverage taxes.
Abstain. Counsel.
You know, I I definitely think after this summer, the outside dining, we definitely have room to grow and take it to the next level. I think that town administrator and the administering and Diane Williamson, the community development, these these funds will allow them to go to the next level next year and and to do it once and do it and do it in the right way. So the motion is to approve $12,000 out of the contingent general fund to move forward with the par engineering estimate that will be received.
Tim.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's 12,600 if my memory is correct.
12,600. Yep, I'm just going to double check my numbers, sorry.
Not at all.
Yep, you you are, you are correct. The general fund will be 12,600. Thank you for that correction.
All right. So Tim made the motion to approve to have this, these funds come from the general fund, seconded by Mary. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to vote in favor because obviously we have to cover the bill. However, I'm going to vote with certain caution that we tap it into the general fund. This is beyond what was approved at the budget time. And I certainly don't want to see this to become a trend of us being able to think that we can just come up with projects and go, well, we we got money, I'm a kitty. So I just want to bring some caution.
It's well said, Tony. It's it's we, this council, the administrator department has taken an excessive amount of time to come up with our budget. And yes, we do have the funds in general fund. But I do concur that this is special circumstance, and that is now on the record, right? Special circumstance mentioned by you, reiterated probably by all of us, that this is not normal course of action, nor do we want it to be. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1. This is about bonds council in regard to the town of Bristol reimbursement resolution for the general obligation bond series 2023.
Oh, hi, bond counsel.
Good evening, everyone. I'm great from Macklaw Associates. And we have, on the eve of the interest rates going up another three quarters of a point, 75 basis points, another resolution for you to borrow. This time it's not to borrow, it's a reimbursement resolution, my apologies. We are looking at accelerating some of the borrowing because of the rising interest rate environment. And we've also been meeting to look at different alternatives for borrowing with the subsidized rate using rib funds. And I know that Diane Williamson and Sarah and Steve are looking into applications. So this particular resolution is before you because some of the projects are underway. And if you recall, you need to adopt an official action be so that you can use your bond funds to reimburse you. So it's $7 million, but this does not allow you to borrow $7 million. We would be coming back to you once those projects are finalized. When we come back to you, there may be one or two different bond issues, again, trying to slice and dice the projects so that we can get the lowest interest rate depending upon the source of the capital for those projects. The actual scope of the projects that's in the first recital clause or the first whereas clause talks about financing open space, watershed, recreation, end of the road retrofits. You all know what that is because I just learned what it is. Shoreline access improvements, repair and rehabilitation of town roads and sidewalks. Of course, it's been ongoing in the town drainage, repair, rehabilitation, construction improvements to town buildings, water quality improvements and acquiring of capital equipment in connection therewith. A good majority of these projects fall within the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank project. And if you recall, that's a subsidized rate of two thirds of the interest rate. But in order to go for that funding, an application has to be made for the projects to be on the priority project list. And I know that Diane Williamson is, some are already on it, some need to be on it. And I know that she and Sarah Hassel are working on getting that done. It would be nice to do this sooner rather than later because interest rates are probably going up again. And the more they go up, obviously, the higher your debt service is going to be. So any of that, long-winded, I apologize, it's late in the night, but I did want you to know.
Sandy, it's $7 million. It's okay to.
So there's a plan. We're looking for the lowest interest rates possible, and this is merely to say that you have a plan in the future to reimburse yourself from bond funds.
Okay, I want to take a moment, if I may, just you gave us a a nice summary there. And this includes road retrofits. So to remind everybody at the in this council and the public, is at the end of a road that kind of goes into water, it's currently in a lot of our roads, it'll just wash into the water. And these retrofits, and there's multiple examples, I'm thinking of Smith Street because I remember that one going in of it will catch that water, clean the water or a lot of it. So keeping gravel, keeping oil from cars and all that from going into the water. And that's happening on Fails, Narrow, Portside, Gibson, Anawamsket. It also includes drainage, which we've all had conversations about. If you live on or near Sherry or Varnum, there are some serious drainage issues over there. So this will help us make improvements there. And then everything is downhill, right? So any improvements there are also felt as improvements down down the street. So there's a lot of efforts and we're able to do this because of not just this council, not just past councils, but lots of councils before that and lots of administrative decisions that puts us in a bond rating of AAA. I forgot what we're, there's so many As now. And the point is, is that.
Double A.
Double A.
Just shy.
AAA is great though.
I like the sound of AAA.
That's right, the roadside assistance and bond rating. So the point is, is that this council and previous councils and administration make sure that we borrow responsibly. It's a lot of money, but this makes sense because it allows us to do the improvements. And those improvements include money that we borrowed to do 10 Yard Brook and a myriad of other things. So I just wanted to take a moment. This is not, we go through agenda items quickly sometimes, and we all know $7 million is a lot of money. And it isn't all at the same time in today's world, but these improvements are most needed or inappropriate. So counsel.
I agree 100% with you, Chairman. You know, I know the administrator, I know when I said to him, and I'm sure now with him, you know, we get those hits. You know, people walk in through those doors, you know, you got to come and look at my drain, you know? And you visit with them and you're up to your knee, you know, in water. And I'm not kidding you, I remember visiting some of those, you know? So certainly it will alleviate many of the issues that our residents have faced over time. A little bit overdue, not to anyone's fault here, but certainly we doing the best we can to resolve those issues.
Also add, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, when we do these projects now, we don't have to pay for them later. And they're going to cost a lot more later on. And I think that we're going to look back and look at some of these projects that we've done and some of the projects that have been completed under some of the bonds that we were under or financing with. We're going to be really happy that we were in at the rates that we were.
Definitely support the bond, $7 million. The infrastructure improvements are going to be, they're a smart move to move forward. I think about the rainstorm a couple of weeks ago in Cranston where I believe the streets were underwater. Streets were crumbling. And I think this is, we're taking a proactive approach to make sure that our infrastructure is intact to handle those heavy storms and, and also take care of the environment at the same time. Just curious, Sandy, what's the interest rates? Do you know what the interest rates are on the, like a bond like this, just ballpark?
Yep, so now, well, before the 75 basis, we're seeing bonds like this without the subsidy, the one third subsidy at about four, four and a half percent. Which is, you know, by all standards, very low still.
So we have to remember. Threes.
And we were under one at one point. I think that was my only time. Under 1% for, yeah. But so we're looking at all different programs. We're looking at, you know, the cost of issuance, keeping that low.
Yep.
But also keeping the debt service low. There are a lot of different projects out there. And so this is our first step. I'm sure that we'll be meeting again. And the goal, I think, is probably to have something done before the next interest rate hike, if there is another one.
I'll make a motion to accept the reimbursement resolution.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2. This is Director Williamson, and this is the review of the use of the Medicom mixed use zone.
Hi, Diane. Your memo to us said that the planning board discussed this and needs some additional time and asked for that we would have more information at our next meeting, is that right?
Exactly. That's right.
Can we? I'll just save you all of that.
Thank you.
Next meeting is the 12th, and I believe your meeting is the 13th, so maybe the November.
Thank you for that. Yes, so it would be the November meeting. Thank you.
15, love your serve, Diane. So could we have a motion for to continue this to November 2nd?
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Don't worry, Diane, you get a moment.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3. This is Director Williamson in regards of proposed revision to the zoning ordinance regarding the cannabis related issues. And there's a draft ordinance attached.
So Diane, this, obviously, I had requested it as on behalf of this council request to have this in front of us. This is, this proposal is a mirror of the medical marijuana ordinance? Or is it close to that in the sense of zoning, I should say? So.
Yes, this is an ordinance that the solicitor's office drafted. The planning board reviewed it at their September meeting. They recommended that it be adopted. They had a, an edit that was already incorporated into this before it was sent to you. And it does mirror the, it would allow this use as a special use permit use. And the standards for the use would be the same as those for the compassion centers.
So it's, it's a mirror.
Pretty much a mirror, yes.
And so if this council wants to take the next step to kind of adopt this, then this would be on, obviously, we have a ballot question. That includes retail sales of marijuana, and that's why this is being addressed now. So regardless of the outcome of what the people of Bristol decide they want, this would be in place.
A motion to refer to the town solicitor to draft the ordinance for the first reading for the October meeting, October council meeting, I think it's the 12th.
Right, and I'll, I'll work with Melissa, they'll be sure, and advertising because it's a zoning ordinance amendment.
So we had a motion made by Tim seconded by Tony to refer to the solicitor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I4. This is town administrator consentee with the update to the State of Rhode Island Governor's Commission on Disabilities Clients Review Report.
Mr. Minister.
Hello, I just wanted to report that the seven spaces that were indicated in the state ADA compliance officers' report, they were brought up to code without delay. And there is an invoice there. We did have to use a, a contractor for five of the spaces. The rest of them were done by DPW.
So it would seem appropriate to me, and Tony, make your point please, but it would seem appropriate to me that we just take those funds out of council contingency.
You took it out of my mouth. First of all, thank you, you know, for taking on the project and moving it through. And it certainly looks pretty nice and much more accessible for the folks that need to use it. So thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I agreed that we should pull the funds from the town council contingency.
Second motion, and thank you, thank you for moving on it. I'm glad we were in compliance and thank you for addressing those other spaces.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Can we try that again?
It's only eight o'clock.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I5. This is the Bristol Police Department in regards to the trunk or tree, October 31st, 2022, request for council support.
I make a motion that we approve the $500 for the trunk, the annual Halloween trunk or tree, right? Yes, on my accent, I think that does it.
You got it right. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Is there a discussion?
I don't have a problem about the money. I just had a question about the day. Is this the same, I just don't know the answer to this. Is this Sunday, the same Sunday that they're going to do the walkabout downtown here?
No, so could you state your full name and address?
Chairwoman, they're having the, I made sure they're having the walkabout on the Saturday. We're going to do the trunk or tree on the Sunday and then Halloween's on the Monday. So we wanted to offer the kids a full fun weekend.
All right, because you did it on the Sunday, okay.
I made sure I didn't do it with this.
So you're keeping the sugar going all weekend long.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
I wonder what they will look like on Tuesday.
So I was going to ask, I was going to ask for a different agenda item, but it seemed appropriate to kind of connect it on here. Major Burke, if you could just take a moment, you handed me this, and it just seems appropriate because it's connected to the police department. So.
Correct. Every, every, there's one day every month that the Fox Rec Department has one hour coffee and they pick a busy need from the town to attend. And this month on the 27th, it's going to be Chief Lynch. He's been asked to participate in the coffee hour. On that date, members of the Bristol Police Department will be present at the Fox and Rec Department that day to greet the public. And if they have any questions for us, we'll be there to, to meet the public and answer any questions.
So that's Tuesday, September 27th at 9:30. And Chief is going to be there, but more importantly, Brody is going to be there, so.
I believe the Fox Rec Department requests that if anyone is going to attend, they either call or sign up on their website just so they can.
So they should call Town Hall, Parks and Rec.
The Fox Rec.
Parks and Rec Department. Excellent.
Just so they can have a, an estimate of the number of people who are going to attend.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't state your name. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the I6 for the executive sessions. We want to move that.
Yes, please.
The next item on the agenda is J1, and this is an RFP 993. This is the Community Choice Energy Aggregation Consulting Service. Bid opening was today at 12:00. We did receive one proposal from Good Energy LP. It's the general partner of the Good Offices Technology Partnership LLC.
Motion to refer to the town administrative act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is bid 994, excuse me. 994, it's the town count common pickleball courts. And we did have the bid opening today at noon. We did receive one bid from JG Coffee Company LLC, 1226 Hope Street, with a bid amount of $76,696.
Make a motion that we refer this to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town and make many folks very happy.
That's an easy place. So there's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrator. Any discussion?
I just had a quick question for Warren, and it's just on the pickleball. Is it going to be of, like, are we converting these tennis courts? Or is it going to be kind of a hybrid of both? Or is it just going to be, yeah?
It's going to be both. So two of the courts closest to Wood Street are going to be converted to six permanent pickleball courts. The third tennis court close to the gazebo will be restripped as a tennis court, but will also have striping for two temporary courts if they need them, where they bring in their portable nets. But there'll be six permanent courts where the two tennis courts used to be.
Okay, great. Definitely a popular area for pickleball. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is K1. This is Alan Clepper, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority. And this is the monthly report for August 2022.
Motion of a seethin file.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A1, potential hiring of town personnel, and the appropriate letters have been sent out.
Counsel.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So this is the end of the broadcast for the Bristol Town Council meeting. We'll be back out after executive session to close it, but that won't be on TV. So I say goodnight on behalf of all of us. Thank you.